Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and I now call the meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. We are all here in person, so we definitely have a quorum. And next up is the flag salute. Please join me in standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are now on to item three, a review of the Board Superintendent Operating Agreement, which we recently revised, and Owen has agreed to read the communication agreements.
Great, thank you. So Silver Falls School Board Superintendent Operating Agreement, Collaborative Governance. Members of the Board and the Superintendent shall work together as a team, modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members shall recognize and respect the Superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and direct employees in district and school matters. Board members shall give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives, to all issues brought to the Board by individuals and district leadership. The Board shall make decisions only at properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action and policy or district and school administrative matters unless so authorized by Board vote. Communication agreements. Board members shall follow the chain of command and communicate directly with the Superintendent when a question arises or a concern or complaint is voiced by a staff member, student, parent, or community member. Board members shall communicate directly with the Superintendent or Board Chair prior to meetings of the Board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. When a Board Member and/or the Superintendent has an individual concern, he or she shall communicate one-on-one with any member of the Board Superintendent team as appropriate.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move to number five, the consent agenda. I will take a motion on the agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as published. I'm assuming no discussion, so let's vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, we're ready for our student representatives.
Good evening, my name is Hannah Bascher and I am the ASB President. Hello, I'm Bryn Alvin, I'm the ASB Vice President. Thank you for having us here tonight, we're really excited to discuss what's been going on in Silverton High School. We will start off with our clubs and activities. Key Club had their first meeting today and later this month are planning on helping clear oak tree saplings of weeds and debris so they can continue to grow. Later this month, Las Aguilar's plans to decorate a designated area in our school with decorations that represent the Day of the Dead. Some of their senior student club members also plan to participate in this year's 2022 Caesar E. Chavez Leadership Conference at Western Oregon University. The Theater Department, SMTS, is currently in rehearsal for their fall play, The Curious Savage. They will present this on November 3rd, 4th, and 5th at 7:00 PM. They have also been preparing for their annual haunted house. This will take place on Friday, October 28th, Saturday, October 29th, and Monday, October 31st, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The competition season for the speech and debate team started October 1st at the Sam Barlow Fall Frenzy. Four members competed at the early season tournament. Two of their students won second and first place in their event categories. The next competition will be a home tournament on November 5th, the SID Fox Invitational, with the speech events taking place at Silverton High School and the debate events taking place at Sprague. The SHS Interact Club has been involved since before school even started. They helped to clean up Silver Creek with Rotary. Some members also joined the Sacagawea Auction. Their largest fundraiser of the year is coming up with the selling of holiday greenery. Most of their proceeds go to purchase water filters for third world countries. Last week, 15 of our members volunteered to set up, host, and serve, and clean up for the Habitat for Communities fundraisers function that was held at the Senior Center. Our FFA team will be heading to their national convention and competition at the end of the month in Indianapolis. They have 14 students competing in multiple events. We can't wait to hear how they do, and they also recently held their Food for America Day and students from all K-38 schools in the district participated in the event. Our Protective Services Program added an actual fire truck to their fire science program and just completed updating its appearance as a SHS Fox Fire Truck. It's parked out front in the roundabout if you want to take a look before we're leaving tonight. Health Occupations of America, Future Business Leaders of America, Auto Shop, Battle of the Books, and Art Club have a meeting to put their plans together for the year. Now to our SHS Fall Sports. Our volleyball team is currently ranked second in state with an 18-2 record. They have their senior night this week on Thursday. Our football team is currently 5-1. They're currently first in league and ranked number two in state as well. Our boys soccer is 3-0 in league and league play and currently tied for first in league as well. Our girls soccer team is 2-1 in league. They are also tied in second for second. Our cross-country team will be running this Wednesday at Seven Oaks Middle School in Lebanon and will have their second time trial event this Friday evening at McInnes Field. Finally, we wanted to wrap up our report by talking about ASB and Homecoming 2022. We are so excited to report that Homecoming 22 was a huge success. Our dress-up days had high participation from both students and staff. In fact, it was one of the highest rate of participation we have seen in a while. The class lip syncs at our Homecoming Assembly were a huge hit. Everyone loved them and cheered quite loudly. Our parade was awesome with so much participation, amazing decorations, and a whole bunch of candy. The future Fox Bear was a big hit for the K through 5th grade. Next, we had our football game and our halftime coronation. We're happy to report that we had a huge turnout and a big win by the Foxes. The halftime coronation was successful as we crowned our 2022 court royals. SHS students ended the night at the bonfire also organized by ASB. This event is a highlight for many students as the bonfire is such a hit with the Silverton Fire Department, who are always there to help go off without a hitch. Students enjoyed music, the fire, and heard from their fall sports athletes on how their seasons were going. Finally, we had our Homecoming 22 Dance. We had the most students participate in our dance than we have seen in years. So many students dressed in their best attire and showed up for a good time dancing and celebrating all things homecoming. ASB wants to thank the SHS staff, students, our families, and our community for helping us with an amazing and memorable homecoming. We really couldn't do it without everyone's support and participation. This concludes our report. Thanks again for your time and go Foxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is number eight, Silver Falls Education Association. Hello, Mr. Lazier?
Hi, Sheldon Lazier for the SFPA. I'm pleased to present to you this evening and happy to report that my AG took first in dress-up participation this last week. So one thing that I'm actually, I'm new to the, not new to the district at all. Grew up here, graduated here, left because I thought I hated it, came back because I realized I was wrong. And I have completed all of my purgatory and penance in service back to the district that raised me and decided to stay on. I recently just moved to the middle school as a LRC teacher there in the Special Ed Department. Very, very happy with that assignment and also just joined the bargaining committee for our contract, which is still ongoing. What I have to say there, I think that both sides are still bargaining in good faith. It is going slow. That's new for me. When I was on the bargaining committee 10 or so years ago, I mean, we were wrapped up by June or July. So to now see two bargaining runs still going is, that's new. Okay, well, here, I can pitch in and help out. One other thing that is going well in my own classrooms, because I'm new to the building, is I've been doing Ask Me Anything sessions with my students and those have been great. So I don't know if this is the time where I'm allowed to open it for questions, but please feel free. Go ahead and ask me anything about where the union's at or how schools are going. Happy to answer anything you may have.
Thanks for taking care of my kid today.
Hey, yeah, yeah, he's a great kid. Happy to have him.
He fell asleep in Mr. Lazier's class. And Mr. Lazier made sure he got a little nap before he went to the next class.
He looked engrossed in his book. And he was, we've done, he was all cut up with all of his work and so this is a good time to read and he was really into his book. Like into it.
So into it.
Yeah, yeah. Great kid.
Well, I'll just say I appreciate you joining the bargaining team and it's been, you've been a great addition to the group, asking good questions. I just want to say thanks.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yep, it's a pleasure. I actually enjoy the process. I geek out about contract language and stuff, so I'm having a good time too.
Well, we appreciate you coming and presenting and hope to see you back.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Sheldon.
Thank you.
All right, it's now time for public comment. If you would like to speak during public comment and are attending virtually, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're attending in person, please approach the public comment table located in the front.
Do we have principal reports?
Oh.
Or is it next?
Yeah, it's next. 7A? Oh, thank you, yes, no. We're going to go back, one, to number seven, School Principal Reports, Silverton High School. Yep. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. Thank you for the record. I get to be Silverton High School, so we'll see on the top, so thank you for having us this evening. In our report, thank you, Daniel, for helping us get this started. I was accused last time of taking up too much airtime, so wanted to kind of shorten it down and maybe focus on the big picture and a few things that are shifting and moving as we have gotten started. First of all, just extremely ecstatic of starting the school year with a little bit more normalcy, seeing everybody's faces and walking around the building. It's just been an extreme joy to start this school year so far. Wanted to share with you one big shift, and that's our new bell schedule and moving into block. And to help me share that, I think it's extremely important to understand the historical context of where that came from and where we are today. Wanted to make sure for clear for the record that this is not a See Oni Thompson leadership change just for change sake. So I think it's extremely important that we focus on a little bit of historical context. All of you have much more historical context than I do in this community, and Dr. Barnes is here to assist with that in sharing what the building has gone through over the past few years. If the clicker works.
It will. I'm Kirsten Barnes, I've taught here since 1998 at Silverton High School. The first year we opened up this building was the first year I was teaching here, so I taught two periods a day at the Pine Street campus and then four periods a day at Slater Street and kind of back and forth over the next 11 years. And I think our story about our block schedule really starts in 1994 when we pass a bond measure, and the bond measure was for $38 million to build Phase 1 of Silverton High School here at the Pine Street campus. And in that design, it was designed with rooms 119, 120, 121, and 124, 125, 126 to be an interactive area where our house program that had social studies, math, and science put together and to make our community smaller. And with the idea of forming in the long run a block system that would help us transition and move kids through school in a different fashion than we had in the past. And...
And also, Daniel, if you could...
Oh, Daniel, do you have that? Is it coming up or haven't come up maybe?
It'll help everyone.
It'll help.
Somebody's to follow along. The switch may be on the left-hand side of that remote.
Thank you, Daniel.
No, you're good.
It's just easy.
Yeah. The points there, they just kind of show it. So, you know, when that was built, that was kind of the idea, and then in 2002, we kind of had some economic woes, I would say. And in that year, the house system was collapsed because they needed to save money because we had a lot of issues we were working through. And we had eight high school teachers cut at the semester because we couldn't afford what we had at that point. And I was the lowest on the chopping block. I didn't lose my position. I found that being a club director and having two sports I was coaching and directing, a musical at some point and helping out with that with theater program, that I was able to get enough points to help me stay in my position, but it was really close. And so, you know, when that happened, it just kind of changed the outlook a little bit here of what we could do next because we didn't have the ability to be as creative maybe at that point. 2006, after a couple of tries, we passed the $47.5 million bond to complete construction here at Silverton High School. And then 2009, after 11 years, we all moved back in together. And that was a big deal because we had a staff that was really two different staffs that had to get to know each other. They'd been hired apart from each other, and it was just a new phase of us working through. So that takes us to 2011, and the district hosted Marcia Tate, who came and talked about the way the brain works and how to focus on engagement, and really challenged teachers to have students fully engaged for the entire period in what they were doing. And some of us noticed that when we have them like fully engaged, working at that intensity rate the entire period, and you have seven classes a day, it's really hard on them. And it means more homework at night and just kind of working through like, how do we work this? We thought our teaching was improved, but there were other things that we had give and take on. And so, kind of working back, how do we deal with that? 2013, anxiety levels were raising all over the United States. We received a chalkboard grant to help us with professional development and to help us with our creative compensation, a lot of those different things that we've been involved with. And Oregon projected that one-third of teachers would retire by 2020. And of course, the pandemic came in at that point and made that go a little bit faster. And so, just kind of taking it down the road, 2016, the NEA study came out that says our block schedule is a stress buster that students need. And it really challenged schools to think about like, how does your schedule impact the way that your students do things? Do they have time to play sports? Do they have time to be creative? Do they have time to be in activities? Or are they like one-focus students that don't have a lot of options for that? And so, at that point, we started forming disappearing committees, I would say, and we had some leadership changes in that time period too. And so, from 2018 to 2020, we had several disappearing committees that talked about our schedule, like what would be best for us to focus on? How do we make this a great place to work, a great place for kids to come to school, and to be a unique place? We have one of the most beautiful buildings in the state of Oregon. What can we do to really focus and show what this building was designed to do? And then we had COVID, and as part of COVID in 2021, we used a four-by-four block to help us reduce the amount of classes students had. So we did nine weeks at four classes during that time period, and students improved. It was much better than the semester before, we had some improvement from there. Teachers kind of said, we like this, what does this look like? We had a full 14 people join a committee in 2021, well, working throughout the summer, and everyone volunteered for it, no one was paid to be a part of that. But what kind of schedule could we create that would really embrace what we were trying to accomplish and make our school the best school in the state of Oregon? And so, we started working through that, and for the next year, we refined plans. In April of 2021, we voted, 82% of the staff voted, let's move forward and go from there. And then for the next year's time, we continued to work on it. And then finally, in April of 2022, the staff voted again, and at the staff vote was 90% of the staff voted to move to the block that we started this year. So it's kind of the backstory, and I think sometimes it's really easy to think that we quickly moved to this moment, but for me, it's been like 20 years coming to get to that point, and it's been just exciting to watch students start interacting. I teach in the CTE program, so I teach in the fire science program, and I have a chance to be the CTE coordinator, and I work with all of our different groups. And we've just seen our kids just have enough time to start thinking and showing what they can do and not just put things together and put it away and come in the next day to do the same. So it's been nice to have them have a little break in between days, and then they come back ready to go again, and it's been a good start for us.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's extremely important to understand that historical context, and this is what it looks like. This is the type of a modified block that we run on an A-B schedule from our 45 minutes to our 80 minutes. And of course, you know, what's most important is that our school day is still the same amount of hours, it's cut up a little bit differently. But what's more important than the amount of time that we spend on one content area is the level of engagement that our teachers have with our students. And that high-level engagement moves towards higher-level student outcomes, and that's what we're working on. No matter how we cut up the bell schedule, we still have to increase our craft to be better engagers of our content areas. So that's what we're going to be working on. Of course, this is something that we shared with some of our parents, we kept it really simple. Here are some four major benefits that we know that research has shared with us about block schedules. More course options for students, that also allows for more course options in our catalog without, maybe not without, that's a little bit strong, but with less of a threat of destroying maybe another program. So we like to create more opportunities without other programs feeling threatened. Increased credit recovery options, we know that this is a battle regardless of COVID, but COVID has exacerbated some of the learning loss that we've seen, and we're going to continue to need some opportunities for credit recovery, especially now that students are moving up into their transcript years and secondary. We know that we need to make sure that we have those opportunities. Research also shares that the ease of student daily management of coursework, it slows the day down a little bit more and being able to kind of focus for a greater period of time on a content area. The last one, greater opportunity for deeper learning in the classroom as we further engage in our district guaranteed and viable curriculum. We look at our teaching practice, we also look at how we're moving forward with diving deeper into the content area and that we don't have a difference depending on the teacher, that it's consistent and guaranteed. And now, as we move into the assessment cadre this week, actually, it started over the summer, but we have a lot of our teachers going into it this week. We're going to see some of the data tell us how maybe our bell schedule is benefiting us. And of course, there's two sides to every coin. This is not about all of the benefits. We know that we have to get better, and our focus this year and next year is going to be on engagement. What does engagement look like and how we're going to measure that? A little bit, while I'd like to share as a path for our future, what we did is we talked about, as an administration, we talked about either pillars or priorities this year and how we're going to implement that. And we chose five. Really, we usually don't like to choose more than three things that we're really going to focus on, but we felt that these five things intertwine with each other. So although there's five, there's two or three of them that are very similar. I won't read through each and every one of these, but our major five targets right here, target one is to focus on our arts vocation CTE program. Really want to expand that. This meets our district goal one and goal three. We have, like Dr. Barnes said, beautiful facilities, amazing facilities, gems of this community. We want to increase that visibility, we want to increase and enhance that. If you look down at our expectations and our expected measurables, very lofty goal of 100% participation with showcase of our community events. What that means is we want every single student that participates in CTE on our arts program to have that opportunity to be in a showcase throughout the year. Our second target, behavior management systems, we'd love to design and implement school-wide behavior support program that's centered on tiered restorative practices. So we're going to need to focus on what those mean, what the tiered supports are from classroom to all student school activities. That again meets our district goals one and two. And you can see what our expected measurables are as we continue to look at what data points are important to us. Our third target or pillar, our priority, is student support advocacy. Throughout some research, we know that two major points of secondary education are the movement from eighth grade to freshman year and then the transition from our seniors to life. So we're really looking at researchable strategies that strengthen student outcomes because of those transitions. So one of them that we started this past summer was a transition from eighth grade to freshman summer program. Not just a summer camp, but really diving into self-efficacy and belonging, which are part of the surveys that we take district-wide that we're looking to increase that data point. What does belonging mean, all while supporting the culture and heritage of what Silverton is? So that's the two bookends that we're really looking to strengthen, our incoming freshmen and then our outgoing seniors, getting them ready for life, whatever that may mean for them, if that's post-secondary education, career, or just being life-ready. So we're looking at ways to do that, which also moves into our freshman leadership academy. That's not so much the eighth graders moving into ninth grade, that's our actual first day of school. What does an academy look like to strengthen who and how we define what a Silverton student is? If I close my eyes, I want to be certain that I can tell that I'm at a Silverton High School and not just any other school across the country. So if we can flush that out, define that, make that very clear as what our expectations are, and that freshman academy teaches those students what it really is to be a Silverton High School student. That's kind of aligned with target three and four together. And our target five behind our icons there is student engagement. And that's what we talked about from our change of bell schedule, our block schedule. It's not how much time we cut up and how much time we spend throughout the day on a content area, it's how well we engage our students. And there's a two-year plan that we're going to implement. Thank you guys for voting yea on making our Wednesdays PD days, as we will utilize these days for continuous improvement of our student engagement, what those strategies look like, how that enhances our maps that we're working on, and what our common assessments look like because of it. So those are the data points that we're going to move into that give us some measurables and expectations on student engagement. Want to just spend a little bit of time on those five priorities and the major shift into our block. And then we move into some bright spots. And as our students said, you know, we have some amazing bright spots, we just came off of our homecoming, we have a brand-new wrapped, not a brand-new truck, but it's brand-new wrapped and it looks amazing. You may see somebody up there familiar, our fearless leader throwing candy out. It was great, it was an amazing experience, first time I ever got to ride on a fire truck. And our band, just amazing, they looked beautiful in their outfits and their gear. And I did want to share that our band decided that they wanted to do a, what is it called when they come out one at a time? Flash mob. A flash mob. So they decided that they wanted to do a flash mob for their students. So one would come out playing one instrument, and then another, and then another, and another, until they're in a full set. And it was just amazing, and it was a great thing to witness. This was completely student-driven, and all of their fellow students greatly appreciated it. And it was during lunchtime, some of you guys may have already seen it, but let's see if hopefully technology works and we might be able to see this treat. Is that my time? I'm trying to move my... All right, it it went on and it was We're available for any questions of superintendent if there's anything that we missed.
I was just curious to um to know whether the block system you 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 uh referred to this briefly, but whether the block system creates any challenges with your with your mapping. Is it is it easily integrated into that? That do those two kind of systems integrate pretty well?
Yeah, I I well, I'll speak from administrator's perspective and then maybe from a classroom perspective. It, I think um when we look at it from an administrator's perspective, we're really looking at what are the consistencies and the strategies that align with standards and then what are some of the strategies that align with engagement? Now, from a teaching perspective, they might have a little bit of, we we started it in one schedule and now I have to put on a different lens and look at it another schedule. Uh but I don't want to speak for every every content area probably has its own um issues or, you know, pitfalls with with that. So I'll let Dr. Barnes.
Yeah, so I, you know, I don't think it caused me any issues to have to necessarily redo overall thoughts of how our schedules align and what we're trying to do. Where it caused me to make changes is in how how it flows in the week. So I know for me, there were items that I couldn't get done in one day. It would take two or three or four days because by the time they would get their safety devices on, everything else like that and get back out there. It would take a while. It'd take four days. Now I can do a y- an item that normally took me four days in one block period. And that's just because they can get the repetitive nature of what they need to do and we don't have to restart things over again like we would just be getting to the point where they were getting it and then we'd have to put it all away. And then you come back again and they so they weren't getting the repetition that they needed. So that was good. And I know from talking with um some of my friends in the uh science department, they were really excited that they could actually do the entire lab in one period and and be able to see different outcomes than they'd ever seen before because they'd ever had more than forty minutes to let the lab grow and and go where it was going. So, you know, we found that. In in some ways, you have to adjust what you do. You can't stand in front of the class and and talk at kids. You have to be interactive with them and you have to um give them opportunities to explore. And you can't expect them just to do it at home. And so what I love about it is I have the chance to work with students, introduce a topic, give them a chance to explore it and then give them a chance to kind of ask questions that they wouldn't normally get to ask because they've gone home at that point. And so for me, it's just been a great option to see them learn new things and do new things and um not be afraid to explore something that they haven't had a chance to do before.
Right. Oh, that's great. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, uh thanks for sharing that. I thought it was really interesting. It looks really, I think, positive. What um what lessons have you learned in the first few weeks having rolled it out for the first time and what are your plans to address?
Well, you know, we've learned a lot of lessons, obviously, as we go through. You know, we're still learning. I mean, what's really nice about it is our schedule, we can we can move it to do some of the things that we need to get done. So like this week, we have testing that we're taking place. So we have our P S A T and our pre-A C T that are taking place during the week. And so that has to be on a Wednesday because there's a national testing day for that. So this week we have an A and a B schedule on Monday and Tuesday and then we have an A and B schedule on Thursday and Friday. And so we really get to keep a pretty concrete week of what we're doing with that um testing day in between. It's also opened up the opportunity for us um to move not away from our advisory group, but change the outlook of our advisory group. Our homerooms now become a place where kids come together, get help, find assistance, but um we we do a lot of our instruction or our our points to help them move forward and it's something called flex time. And that flex time is where they have a choice over some of the different things that they're going to go and explore. So um like today, we had clubs available for kids to do during the school day. We haven't had a place for clubs to fit in during the school day. So if kids rode the bus, um they didn't have the same opportunity to do that. And so um you know, we had four clubs meet today during class. We had some teachers that were able to do makeup labs that had made arrangements. So they were able to get that makeup lab done during class. So it wasn't after school where they missed practice or had to ride a bus home. And so we've been able to integrate a lot of things in our school day that that wasn't really possible before. Um but obviously, there are things we learn along the way. Some students, it's it's all new. Our freshmen probably have the biggest curve at this point to kind of work through. But they're getting it. I have a lot of freshmen in my introductory level classes and and in a month's time at this point. They're moving forward and and kicking it in and it's been just kind of fun to watch them get to that next stage.
Yeah, and kind of to pair with that, China, your last question in terms of uh there's a few years back, I think you guys probably heard of flipping the classroom, right? And there was you know, looking at equitable practices, not everybody is resourced, not all families are resourced in the same way. So let's push more of the learning into the classroom and less practice at home. And I think maybe this can be some of that answer. When we start practicing more in the classroom, we don't have to pack your backpacks with three hours of homework. Let's get some of that stuff done. Um and Jonathan, to your question, I think one thing I I I neglected to state earlier is we want to be scientific about this. We want to be academics. We want to look at what the data is telling us. So we will be sending out surveys to our community, to our students, to our teachers. What are our learnings? Where do we have to pivot? And we want to continue to improve that and move forward. We don't want to look back, but we're going to, we're going to start taking some of that data and that surveys um as early as the end of this month or the beginning of quarter one.
Yeah, and I think we've done some temperature checks already, just kind of asking kids how it's going, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, you know, where are we at? And we've been really mostly thumbs up. I mean, it's been, I was actually surprised when we started asking just some basic questions about where we're at and and where's it going at this point because we know that the first year is by far the roughest year. We've had a really good start and I think part of that is um they're excited to be at school and and have a chance to do some of these things that we haven't been able to do in a long time.
Other questions?
I'll just say that um I that was the first time I'd seen your plan and it's impressive to me as an educator. I really see a lot of student focus on there and see where there can be some really powerful outcomes. So awesome. And then also um I've taught both the block and the traditional and there's pros and cons to both. But it it is really great that you're focusing on engagement um and kind of prioritizing that because there are disadvantages, right, that you just have to just pick what's most important. So um I love to hear that more practice in the classroom because that the classroom is where students can get feedback. Um and that is learning, feedback is learning. So thanks so much.
Thank you guys. Thanks.
All right, so now we're going to do public comment. Um I'm going to read the points and then we will take um comments either in person or online. So we're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. Please keep the following in mind. If you wish wish to speak, please raise your hand and be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group or of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The board will not hear complaints against individual district district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen and you will likely not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respect respectfully, I think that's supposed to say, and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board decorum agreement. Anybody online?
No hands raised online.
Anybody in the audience? Come on up, sir. Can you tell us your name?
Yes, hello, board. My name is Dave Adams.
And what's your relationship to the district?
So I'm a father of two students as well as a a member of the community living within the Silver Falls School District boundary.
All right. Are you speaking for yourself or for a group?
So I'm speaking about a group. However, these are my individual comments, so I'll try to keep them to three to three minutes.
Minutes. Thank you. We're pretty um we we keep time. And um what is your topic?
Uh robotics and STEM programs within the district specifically for uh kids in the elementary age group.
All right.
So I'd like to share with the board, last May, my son competed in a robotics competition, a part of a team of four students. They went to an international robotics competition in Texas where they competed with other students elementary-aged around the world. And I wanted to share surprisingly, uh my my son's first year and he was a part of this team where they competed and they they placed second in their division, fourteenth overall of roughly six hundred teams around the world from Morocco, from Japan, as well as many states around the U S. And I I have three points I wanted to share with the group that really cover some things in uh as far as apparent in my experiences. I wanted to cover first, I was amazed in looking at the other teams, the level of school involvement from these teams from around the world. It was apparent that was quick three minutes. It was apparent that the 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 teams representing their schools had STEM a part of their day-to-day activities within the schools. And it was amazing to see point number two, the level of diversity, inclusion and just involvement that each of the students had throughout this activity where they were they were interacting with their peers with a wide range of different physical skills, mental abilities and social abilities. It was just, I got to see kids on autism spectrums, kids with developmental disabilities and kids that really had trouble interacting with their peers. All be welcomed, participate, and being a sports member myself, this was something different that I hadn't experienced before from a robotics program. I could probably share more data with this group and I don't think I have to on STEM programs and what they bring to students uh at this young age and how it can help a lot of the things that we see in the older age that I've heard the board and the school district talk about here uh just this year on in in challenges at older ages. But I have some short-term goals. My short-term goal would that the board and school district members be more aware that this is an option for current students. I have some flyers here that I can share, but I really want to be mindful that I'm just, this is parents' perspective. I'm not here to promote the group, but I would really like to see the board and the school district in their talks and planning for long term, think of ways that they can incorporate this this STEM program or other STEM programs like it for specifically this age group moving forward. I won't be available tonight. The district has my contact information. I'd be happy to point the district and the board members to the team specifically as well as foster some questions and comments of opportunities to see this group as well as information for future on how the board can connect with the team specifically. Thanks for your time.
Thanks for your engagement. Quick clarifying question, Chair?
Go ahead.
I was just curious what grade levels, if you had mentioned which grade levels you're referring to.
So this specific program, a part of the Vexi Q program, takes students ages nine to eighteen. So although it was elementary age, the the group is inclusive of of all of the age groups in the school district.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody online, Mr. Bush?
I see, I see no hands raised.
Anybody else in the audience? All right, we will move on to administrator and staff reports. Um superintendent report is next.
I'm going to move up here.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. It was really great to see the high school present on the block schedule. And um one of you asked what the benefits were and and I just wrote down, scratched down in my notes. If we think about the little changes that were made, that the little positive things that can come out of a block schedule, think of all the minutes that are lost during one transition at a high school. Multiply that times seven and then times a hundred seventy-five days. How many more instructional days we make up because of a block schedule? And also the amount of time going a mile deep and an inch wide rather than going a mile wide and an inch deep with our priority standards. So those are huge, those are technical changes that end up having a transformational result. And so I just want to thank Dr. Barnes and Mr. Thompson for their work on this. We're really proud of you. All right. So I want to use my time tonight and I've prepared my comments ahead of time. I want to use my time tonight to address some confusion in our community around the ways we have prioritized and used our S I A funds as a school district and to explain again our reasons for spending a small portion of our general fund budget on services to assist us in our journey to reconcile our biggest challenge facing Silver Falls School District. And that is the safety, security, and functionality of our schools and facilities. Before I get into the particulars of those topics, I want to start by clarifying the concept of student educational equity. It's a term that is widely misused and misunderstood. But simply put, the concept of student educational equity means that we shift resources fluidly as a system to ensure that our students' future opportunities in the world are not predetermined for them due to their life circumstances. Equity is synonymous with support. And students simply need more or different support than their peers to demonstrate proficiency. Equity does not mean equal. It also does not mean the same. Because different students require different levels of support to reach the high standards that we set for all S F S D students. It also does not mean fair because life isn't fair. And because not all students start out from the same place. I would like to ask that you use this concept of student educational equity as the frame for what I am about to explain to you. As you already know, the Student Investment Account, or S I A, was part of the Student Success Act. It was landmark legislation that created a permanent funding source to support students under the broad umbrella of improving student learning and learning environments. As a requirement of receiving these funds, a district submits a plan to the Oregon Department of Education, which they then must approve. That plan has been available on the district website since two thousand twenty and new documentation is added as it becomes necessary and available. Our plan as submitted was approved by O D E and our yearly sustainable allocation of S I A funding in Silver Falls is three million dollars. So how have we used that money? First in two thousand twenty, due to the global shutdown, S F S D was given only a third of our allocation, one million dollars. Upon receiving this, I immediately prioritized the funds to create Sequoia Falls Academy. Upon receiving this, I immediately prioritized the funds to create Sequoia Falls Academy, a comprehensive therapeutic educational learning center which serves our most impacted adolescents. It is widely considered a statewide model for public school reform. To give you an idea of the profile of students served and the disparities they experience, here are several. 63% of students are not on track to graduate. 48% identify as LGBTQ+, compared to an estimated 7% nationally. 24% are minority, compared to 13% district-wide. 43% are socio-economically challenged, compared to 25.3% district-wide. 24% are transitioning from the juvenile justice system to residential treatment and/or day treatment programs. And 31% are re-engaged at Sequoia Falls after having dropped out of school completely. I would like to read to you a few examples of students' comments from a recent lesson at Sequoia. I believe this will give you a better idea of our students' perception of our school district. Number one, and you can see them up here on the screen, "Teachers at the high school played favorites. I wasn't one of them." Two, "At Sequoia, I feel supported and heard." Three, "All your thoughts are accepted and listened to because our teachers understand our struggles." And four, "Coming to Sequoia made me feel welcomed and more comforting about who I am, as well as being Hispanic." If ever there was an example of a school district that equitably prioritizes and distributes its resources to address students' extreme academic and behavioral needs, this would be it. What we have done, unlike any other school district that we know of in Oregon, has been to provide our most at-risk students with a new, renovated, modernized, and attractive learning space in SFSD to both meet their complex needs and to get them across the finish line. Of the 36 seniors at Sequoia Falls last year, 24 graduated with a full diploma, nine earned their GED equivalent, and of those three that did not graduate, two are currently in their fifth year and will finish by the spring. 70% of Sequoia's graduates, up here, were the first in their family to earn a high school diploma or equivalent. I want to say that again. 70% of Sequoia's graduates last year were the first in their family to earn a high school diploma or equivalent. Secondly, and in addition to Silver Falls Academy, we prioritize SIA funding to address our dire need for a centralized family resource and welcome center. Our SIA plan describes the creation of, and I quote, "A welcome center for all families who need help navigating systems, including communication in home languages, and family's social, emotional, and academic support," unquote. This center serves our unhoused families under the Federal McKinney-Vento Act, our students in foster care, and our migrant families, to name a few. Many of these families do not speak English, and some have not ever been in a school district setting. A key strategy in our SIA plan is to break down barriers to our services for every single family residing within our district boundaries, and this center is one method we use to accomplish this. Historically speaking, our central office has not been a place with this concept in mind, was not a welcoming environment for our families in need of assistance, and in many ways reinforced pre-existing barriers. As a result, we were not able to extend our outreach appropriately to those families who would never normally come to us on their own to ask for help. We are also currently building out a welcome center at Silverton High School that will serve a similar purpose. The operative word here, again, we're funding this under SIA, the operative word here is welcome. If you have been to our district office since the overhaul, then you have seen the improvements already. We hired a full-time bilingual liaison to head up our outreach and assistance programs. We created an inviting area near the entrance with computers available to assist our families with different types of registration and support services. The goal is to make our system easier to navigate. We also purchased used cubicles to give our employees workspaces, ensuring they can conduct business with the families we serve in a confidential and private manner. This also has the effect of making the district office quieter, calmer, more professional and inviting, and less intimidating and overwhelming for our families. We redesigned the conference room to be used as a place to meet with families in private, and we also purchased mobile tables and chairs to maximize the flexible use of our very limited space to meet the needs of both our employees and the families we serve. Other flexible uses for this space include, in our conference room, a professional development center for staff, a place to hold our certified specialist meetings and weekly principal meetings, new hire onboarding, retirement transition meetings, payroll assistance for employees and their spouses, and a place to conduct interviews for positions across the district. Each of these uses are specified as targeted expenditures with SIA funds in our district's SIA plan approved by ODE. The total investment of the district office welcome center specifically was $22,000. That is just .4% of our SIA biennial appropriation. .4 of 1%. As an aside, I would like to note here that our SIA plan, as approved by ODE and listed on our website, allocated $110,000 for the welcome center projects. When the SHS Welcome Center is completed, I would be happy to give a final report on the total cost of the two projects together. Third, in order to reach the first goal of our strategic plan, which is, quote, "100% will be on track to graduate by 2025," our SIA plan has been prioritized to fund the implementation of a five-year plan to develop a standards-based guaranteed and viable curriculum, aligned common standards-based unit assessments, and an advanced teacher collaboration structure to evaluate, calibrate, and differentiate instruction to meet students' needs, all developed and driven by our own SFSD teacher teams. This is a massive undertaking, and we are in the third year of our five-year plan. System-wide transformational change is very complex, especially when focusing on student-centered, equitable adult actions in a time when students' needs have never been greater. This is essential to unifying our district's vision for teaching and learning. As I've said countless times, we cannot survive as a school district being independent, teaching to independent sets of standards. We must strive to operate as one team and one school district, aligning our practices to create a system that produces predictable and proficient outcomes each year for every student. To accomplish this, in 2020, we hired the renowned Oregon-based school improvement organization, Educational Excellence, to help us design a comprehensive and systematic professional development framework focusing on frequent job-embedded instructional coaching, timely feedback, and focused, team-oriented training. The SIA funding for this five-year endeavor to date has been $577,000, $577,500. Lastly, I would like to address the use of our district's general fund to pay for expert assistance with our bond advisory committee, our bond communications, and our community polling, to ensure that we are taking every possible step to successfully pass a general obligation bond in November of 2023. Again, you will have full control over this as a board, so that our facilities will finally reflect the love and respect that we have for our students. This summer, we contracted with the Wenaha Group, a Native American-owned consulting firm that specializes in assisting small to medium-sized Oregon and Washington school districts in the amount of $42,000. Wenaha is facilitating our 21-member board advisory committee, which will develop the bond recommendation that I will then bring to the board for approval in late spring. Wenaha meets with district team members every other week, has visited every school district facility, and is working with BLRV Architects to continue to update facility project costs, which keep going up, and potential new middle school designs. If you're a board member, or if you are a member of the bond advisory committee, I think you will all agree that this is a vital part of the process, especially given our community's experience with school bonds in the past. Finally, we have retained the services of Wright Public Affairs, a small Oregon-based firm, to assist us with transparent, timely, and targeted communication plans as we get closer to the November 2023 election. This is a month-to-month retainer-style contract with an estimated total cost of $84,000 from July 2022 through December 2023. In closing, I want to reiterate that all district expenditures and truly every action we take in Silver Falls have their roots in our strategic plan, in our yearly focus that we set, in my own professional goals as superintendent, and in our SFSD theory of action. We are aware of the rumors spread by a few misinformed community members on social media surrounding our fiscal policies and use of funding, especially in light of our efforts to pass a bond in this district. It is important that our community knows and hears from me that we take our role as stewards of public funds very serious. As I've laid out for you here, all spending is done in full compliance with legal and ethical requirements. Furthermore, our use of SIA spending has been done in a fully transparent manner, including approval of those uses by ODE and highlighted on our website for over the past two years. Finally, we prioritize and will continue to prioritize the achievement of our strategic goals in everything we do, because our students deserve nothing less of us. And having said that, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to questions for you, if you have clarifying questions for me. After that, I'm going to have Leslie deliver a secondary part having to do with our SIA funding in terms of how the rest of the funding is being spent this year and next year. So I'll go ahead and open it up to you for questions or comments.
Question?
Yeah, can you define onboarding?
Staff. Staff onboarding is what happens when we hire new staff from outside of the district?
Right.
And we want to take care of healthcare benefits, other types of things we need to sign them up for, other things that may be specific to Silver Falls School District, that type of thing.
I think that's it?
I had one more. When we hire a new employee, it depends what their job is. For teachers, is there like a resource center where, or do they come to Leslie and say, "Can you tell me how this rolls in this district?" Because I know each district's a little different, and I was just curious.
Sure. So we have new staff orientation in August, and then this is the first year that we're starting a comprehensive teacher mentor program in conjunction with WESD.
Yeah.
And I believe we have 10 to...
We have about 10 teachers signed up as mentors, and then we've also connected some principals that, or principals have connected some veteran teachers in their own buildings to new teachers. And I think, you know, to kind of answer your question, we have a wide variety of different employees coming to us, and so we definitely are connecting them with their supervisors with a mentor teacher. But Leslie and myself certainly are available if it's more HR-related, more teaching-related, and Steve and his business department do great onboarding related to, you know, different things that they might need from a payroll, health benefit standpoint. We do that as part of our orientation with new staff. All three of us present different ways that our departments can help them.
So they do have the resources, obviously, but the mentoring is coming together?
Yeah, the mentoring program is kind of relaunching. We had a mentoring program pre-pandemic with some retired teachers. And so we are kind of relaunching this with some funds that are from the WESD, so that the 10 or so folks that are current employees, it's all funded from the WESD, so sub-costs are picked up by them. We're not paying any of that.
Oh, good, okay.
And then we also have some different funds related to ways that they can support teachers, either be compensated for after-hours work or release time to support teachers in the classroom.
Very good, thank you.
In an additional proactive way, I think it's important to note here that we've revamped completely our hiring practices as a district. And so you, as a board, have seen the hiring practice that we've implemented for leaders. It's seven to eight different stages with three separate cut points, and we've now rolled that down to all of our certified hiring. And I think one of the things you'll find if you ask others who saw the group of teachers coming in this year was that they're at a, they truly are at a noticeably different level of quality. And we've heard that from many different stakeholders in the district, particularly about this cohort of teachers that have come in. And so eventually, we will roll that down to classified hiring as well. And so anybody that gets a job here in Silver Falls will have to prove it through multiple stages. No teacher will be hired in Silver Falls School District without proving they can teach our students and go through a debrief lesson with our instructional leaders before they get an offer extended. That makes us totally unique in the state of Oregon to have that as a systems level. It's absolutely critical, now more than ever.
I just wanted to thank you, Scott, for presenting us with some of the profiles and demographic statistics of the students at Sequoia Falls. It was very illuminating to understand really the nature of their vulnerabilities and their challenges, and I'd never heard it put in that framework before, so thank you. That was, that was really compelling.
You're welcome. And it's another example of a school district putting its money where its mouth is. We prioritized $1 million in 2020 to make Sequoia Falls Academy happen, and I would give Jen Hanen and her team all the credit in the world for securing the location, as well as the design of Sequoia Falls. It matters. We treat kids like they're rich. They should not know anything different than the amount of love that we give them, and part of that is reflected in the environment they come to every single day. And so we're looking at the most impacted kids in Silver Falls School District getting one of the nicest learning environments, because they've never responded to traditional schooling, and it's time to catch them up. And we are fully capable of 100% graduation rate. The other thing I wanted to be clear about Sequoia Falls Academy is that that is factored into the graduation rate at SHS. We do not separate the two schools. Sequoia Falls is part of Silverton High School. Those are all of our kids. So when we say 100%, that means every single kiddo gets across that finish line, and we're right there, and I believe we can do that every single year.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say Jen Hanen is in the audience, so hats off. Jen?
And Daniel's going to come put another slide up for you and just, it is that time of year where we're giving our annual SIA update, and so you heard a lot of those details from Scott, and I'm just going to do a really specific wrap-up of the 21-22 spending and then what our plan is for 22-23. One of the huge purchases we did last year was to purchase new K-5 English Language Arts materials. And so since we have already made that purchase, we will have to make a change for those funds for this upcoming year. So that's the one change in our SIA plan, and you all are very familiar with the change because you've been a part of the process with us. We are funding three full-time music teachers from our community feedback and our superintendent work group, and so that is going from K-5 English Language Arts materials last year to three FTE music teachers this year. So that's the one change in our SIA spending plan. All of the rest maintains, is maintaining what we've been doing. So maintaining Sequoia Falls Academy, maintaining our social workers, maintaining increased school counselors, and maintaining our bilingual community liaison. So those are our major spending in the SIA account, and we do have this all on the district webpage. You can just type in SIA, or go down all the way to the bottom on the right-hand side, there's a Student Investment Account link, and all of that's updated. and all of that's updated there. So that's the big change for this year's spending plan.
Thank you, Leslie.
Questions?
Yeah. So years, a few years ago, we had to sort of put together, submit, well, approve and submit a plan for approval with ODE, right? When does that process renew? Or at this point, does it have to go through that again?
So our, I'm in the middle of updating the spending templates now, which is why, part of why I'm giving this board report. And then the state is actually moving to a consolidated plan for six of its grants. So SIA, Measure 98, early intervention systems, CTE, there's attendance. They're all moving into the same spending and reporting format. And so we actually just convened our first team, district team. And the WESD is going to be supporting all districts in our service area to compile all that information and submit a plan in the spring for the next biennium. And so we have to kind of weave all of those together so that it's more transparent about and clear for all of us, I think. And I'm looking at Dr. Barnes because she's on the team as a part of our CTE work. So because we are paying for some things out of multiple grants so that we're all on the same page about what our priorities are and where we're spending our funds. So I think it's going to be a really good thing. It's just going to take a lot of work this year to combine everything and take all of our data and our student focal groups and our community focal groups and ask more questions to then make the plan. We did have a meeting in the spring at the WESD. And the ESD and ODE gave us really good feedback on our plans and what we've been doing. And what they really asked and challenged us to do is to put together more student focal groups of our student subgroups and collect more student data. We have that right now with Youth Truth, but they'd like to see an in-person type of meeting that students could give us information. So that's, that's the next step that this group is working on. So in the spring for the next biennium, we'll have something. But we have a couple of big meetings to work through the planning stages before we come back to you all.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good question. Any others? All right. Thanks, Leslie. 10C is our financial and enrollment report. Steve?
Thank you, Jennifer. So since my teammates did, they had a lot of focus on finances tonight, I'm...
How did we do, Steve?
You did very, very well. Don't have a lot to report. And there are our monthly financials and the enrollment report on the onboard book there. But I can tell you that our auditors will be here or virtual pulling from our audit portal next week to work on final fieldwork for the 21-22 school year and would anticipate an audited financial statement, we're hoping, in December. So working, working hard to get that closed up and complete. But I really wanted to focus on where enrollment settled out. You know, we had some initial numbers last month, about a month ago, when we reported September 12th on where that was at. I'm pleased to report that we only saw a net decrease of seven students from last month's report. So we were at 3679. And as of 10-3, we were at 3672. And that's actually a little better than I would have expected. Usually, we see a little bit more of a drop with, you know, the 10-day student drops and that type of thing. But I think that all the schools are real proactive about dropping students in the system that didn't show up and they had confirmation early compared to even the past. There were just some that they didn't know about and they have to wait for the 10 days. So a net, a net of seven is really not, not too bad. So as of right now, we sit 148 students ahead of where we finished last school year. And so we've recovered close to 40% from our low watermark. Yes, we're still down 60%, but I think we, we performed even a little better than, than expected. So we just continue to keep an eye on this every day, every week. I'll continue to report on this each month. I don't expect us to spill over the 3,700 mark. And we do have to expect that come January, we may see a bit of a, bit of a drop. We typically see a little, a little drop at the high school level after the first semester. But we'll continue to keep an eye on it. I don't have a graphic for this yet. And I'll provide something visually next month. But I can tell you that right now, we have 369 transfers into the school district, inter-district transfers in. And I know the board has a cap at 400, so we still actually have a little bit of room there. But, but that number's not, not too uncommon. And we have, for what we know, and we don't know all the data, 150 students that live in the boundary that are doing something different. So as of last week, we saw that we had 92 students enrolled in five different online charter academies. And we were still waiting on a couple of charter academies to report. So I'll have some updated data on that next month. And I know this number's probably higher, but from what we have been given from the MAM and ESD, we have 23 registered homeschool students because they have to register through the ESD, which would leave approximately 35 students that have transferred out to other school districts. And there could be more of those students. The one piece of data we don't have would be private school enrollment. They're not required to report to us like the online charter academies. So, so I think we'll have some more data there. And I'll put together a slide, you know, for next month. But we're, we're just capturing this data now, and that's what I have to share for today. But as far as dollars go, because I know this question would come from Erin next, what does this equate to? Well, I can tell you that we, we budgeted for about 100 student increase. And so if we're sitting at around 150, we would be about $700,000 better than the budget. But I don't expect the current rate per student to hold because my guess is, and we don't know this yet, but my guess is that many districts around the state are seeing a bit of a, of a recovery, which will actually take the amount per student downward a little bit. Right now, for us, it's 9,955 per ADMW. So if it were to go down, this is just a guess, $125 per ADMW, we would still be $200,000 to $300,000 better than, than the budget. So that's, that's an early estimate. We probably won't get data from the state for at least a couple more months. But they are encouraging, and I plan to go in and update our enrollment data. They do have now the 10-1 reporting data from us, but they're always looking to make sure that we update our estimated revenues and membership as well. So at least they have some, some data. I don't know if, it takes a while for all the districts to report, so they're going to be collecting that data in October. I hope that they update their SSF estimates sooner than they normally do. So we'll, we'll see what happens. Another thing that I plan on getting into further next month will be the report on the pers rates for the 2023-25 biennium. So at their end-of-September board meeting, they adopted the rates for, for the next biennium. And I'm pleased to report that the rates didn't go up as much as expected. And that's the case for most school districts. And so I will have some more information for you on that. So, so that was good news as well. So that's all I have tonight.
Surprising news, actually.
Yeah, it is. Very good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are ready for number 11 discussion items. We only have one tonight. 11A, board member meeting attendance as a best practice. And this was suggested a couple of meetings ago by Erin. So Erin, I'm going to let you lead off and then hoping we can have a good discussion around this topic.
Thanks, Jennifer. There's, you know, as, as we've been working on continuing to solidify our board superintendent and, you know, working agreement, this, this kind of idea came up in my head, you know, how do we solidify just even being a more efficient and a, continuing on desire to be a higher, highest functioning board as we can? And so the one thing that came up to me, and these are a couple of ideas, and I, I really want everybody's opinion and thoughts and input on this. It was really like around how we show up to, to board meetings. You know, we have an important role in our community that we've been selected by our community to represent them. And it's important that we show up with, you know, with our best selves at every meeting. And I think, again, now that we've got our working agreement solidified even into greater detail, a couple of thoughts that I had were, you know, number one is, you know, we're in a, we're in a different place than we were two years ago. And, and really, our, I feel it's our duty as representatives of the community, really, to be here in person at every meeting. You know, that requires sacrifice, and every one of us has to give up a lot of time, including our staff and, and all those who come to these meetings. But, you know, we really should be striving to be here in person. And that's the norm, and that Zoom is, is an exception. Now, if things come up, life comes up, it happens. But really, that, that we should be here in person, and then Zoom should be the exception. I also think that if, if we can't attend here at a meeting in person, that, you know, we as board members individually, and I think this is what the individual board member who can't make it should do is to email the rest of the board and Debbie and Scott and say, hey, you know, I can't make it. And just out of straight courtesy, professional courtesy. We talked about professionalism a lot in these last few meetings, too, with our board working agreement, that, you know, out of professional courtesy, we should let each other know, you know, we're not going to be there, and, you know, a little brief explanation. Hey, I'm, I've got a, I've got called out of town on work. And unfortunately, I'm going to have to join on Zoom. But I think, you know, something along those lines. Or, hey, I have a family task or emergency that I have to, that I have to be at. I won't either make it, or, hey, I'm going to be on Zoom. Something like those lines should be, I think, out of courtesy we should give to our, our fellow board members if, if that's the case for us. And I think finally, too, that, you know, it's easy, you know, I, I know my, our last two years in my, my profession, my job, I'm Zoomed out. And it's easy to check out on Zoom. I'm guilty of it. So I think, you know, if we have to attend via Zoom, again, which is the, the exception, that we need to make sure that our cameras are on the entire time and we're practicing good virtual meeting, good meeting manners, you know, making sure we're muted, that kind of thing. These are all things we all know and practice. But just to reiterate that, that, you know, if that's the case, then, you know, we owe it to our community, we owe it to our staff and fellow board members to make sure that we're on camera the whole time. So those were three initial kind of big thoughts that I had. But again, I'd love to have input, love to have some dialogue around, around that.
I'll just chime in. I try not to go first, but I'm going to go first this time. The idea of giving a courtesy message to the entire group is interesting to me. I do like more than one person being the recipient of the message because what if that person's going to be, is gone or out of contact? So I, I kind of like it because it's transparent. And, and I do appreciate folks giving the notice as early as possible because then we can be set up. Like today, I was set up to have virtual folks. I didn't expect any. But last time, we had some unexpected virtuality, and I didn't have the Zoom up on my computer so I couldn't see if people's hands were raised or whatever. So I appreciate as early as possible getting notice. So just from my perspective, I wanted to say that. And I did want to say also that, that folks have been pretty responsible. And, and I appreciate, you know, Janet's, you know, had some health issues going on in her family that have required her. And, and goodness, the last meeting showed your dedication on the road. So, yeah, I, I, I don't, I just wanted to say that. I appreciate that. And, and our attendance is actually way better in general than it was when I first got on board. Way, way better. And I think it's important that our community sees that we really take this seriously and we're really dedicated. So I just want to give us kudos for that. And now I'll be quiet. Somebody else want to chime in?
Well, I'll chime in just to say that, I guess I share the same opinions that Erin started out with. As far as I'm concerned, the notices, I don't feel like I need a notice that somebody else is going to be on Zoom. But certainly that the board chair and vice chair and that Scott and Debbie would be aware so that, you know, all the technical stuff can happen, I think is really important. But, yeah, I have been impressed. I think everybody has been really responsible with trying to be here and when they're not here, being on Zoom. I mean, that's a pretty cool thing to be on vacation and be able to still participate.
I'll weigh in. I think sort of ditto, right? I mean, I, your points, I thought, had merit. I, I prefer in-person, so that's just where I'm at. I, too, have to do remote meetings for work and wish I didn't. So I think there's better personal connection. I think there's better dialogue. I think it facilitates conversation. And, you know, now that we're able to do, you know, I mean, I, I was currently chair when we had to just shut it down and go into everything being remote. We had to be remote. It was complicated. We had to try to figure it out. But we don't have to do that now, right? We don't have to. And so I, I appreciate it a lot that we are able to be here again in person and we're able to talk and communicate. So ditto, echo your sentiments, I think, exactly. And try to, try to make them. I guess, yeah, people have been able to make meetings pretty much, and that's been good. So, yeah.
Now, I'll just, I mean, I'll just chime in. I basically just kind of agree with the sentiments that in-person, in-person's better. And we have been more and more, you know, we have been doing, but we have been, there's been less Zooming as time goes on. And I'll, I'll definitely agree with Jennifer's observation that our attendance in general has been better these years than from the earlier times since I've been on the board. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, keep up the good work, I guess. Keep, keep the trend going.
I thought we were doing well. I think Zoom is a good option to have because life does have some twists and turns. And when you can't make it, it's wonderful to know that you can use the Zoom to still participate. Is it ideal? Maybe not. But I think it's, it gives us that additional possibility, no matter where we're at. So, I don't know, I feel like our group's been doing well.
No disagreement. Nothing new to add.
There you go. All right, well, it sounds like we are, in general, pretty supportive of trying to be here and everybody being at meetings. There's some, or some appreciation for increasing transparency, like just let us all know what's going on. Some people think just, you know, just the, a core group of people need to know. And, and I, I'm kind of, either way works for me at this point. I do see some benefits, but I'm not necessarily thinking that we need to, you know, make a rule about it. But I think folks have expressed some preferences that maybe we keep in mind and continue to, to work on. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I agree with you in that I don't think we necessarily need to make a rule. I mean, when I Zoom in, I usually contact Debbie. And I, I don't always feel like I need to inform everyone else.
Well, I would appreciate it if you would contact me or Scott and Scott because some, yeah, I just think Scott and I probably need to be in on that, too, and Debbie. So let me just put my... So, let me just put my preference out there that multiple people get contacted at least because sometimes things happen and communication doesn't get through or somebody's absent. Because like Debbie was absent at our last meeting because it was a holiday for her. So, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I was a couple of minutes late for the executive session and I was texting Debbie, hey, let me in. I didn't know she wasn't available, so I fired off everybody else, but I just wavered out, so it worked out. But, yeah, multiple people, best.
Yeah. Any other thoughts? All right. Let's move on then to board reports. We don't often have board reports, but tonight, we have bond advisory committee update. We did have our very first bond advisory committee meeting on Thursday and I guess I will turn it over to either Janet or Owen for them to give their thoughts about the meeting and then I'll chime in in the end.
Well, I guess I'll start out. I thought the meeting went very well. You know, it was kind of introductory in some ways. We did some icebreakers and got to know people and see who our committee was made up of, but then also, we got our first taste of the facilitation that we're going to expect here at the next four meetings and I thought that, I thought they did a very good professional job of laying out the roadmap for what's expected of everyone, what's expected of the group, you know, where we're going to be in the process and when. I think it was just all very clear so that, you know, we've got committee members that understand what the charge is and how we're going to get there and so, I thought the facilitation was excellent in that regard. The burritos were great at the start. That was excellent. So, you know, all in all, I thought it was a really good start to the advisory committee.
Yeah, I agree. I thought the facilitation was excellent. They were so timely, which was a real challenge because they covered a lot, but I thought it was very well done. And I'm going to just take this off just to speak because it's, I can hardly hear myself. The one thing that I will note that really stood out to me was how thoughtful the group was in terms of the participants and everyone really recognizing the complexity of the situation and understanding, we, at one point, we did sort of a pros and cons, like the best things about the schools, the not great thing about the school, meaning the facilities, not the schools themselves. And I think everyone in the room really kind of grasped, like this is not a kind of a black and white situation. There's a lot here to understand and I think everyone was very mindful of that and very thoughtful about it, which I just was really impressed with, that everyone seemed very intentional about getting to a place that was really the best solution for the challenges that we have rather than representing sort of the set viewpoint. So, that was really encouraging and I think it's going to be really good. I think it's a very representative group and I'm really excited to hear from folks. I really am. It's going to be good, I think.
Thank you both. I, the only thing I wanted to add is that I agree with the facilitation and even though we didn't dig super deep this first round and we did icebreaker type things, they were still super meaningful and they are just getting us into the mind frame. And the person who I sat with was on the long-range facilities planning committee and he said in the first five minutes, like the facilitation is amazing. And so, that I think we can be really thankful for the effort that went in to find those partners because I agree that we want to expend our energy in a way that's going to get the best investment for our students and I think that professional facilitation is going to pay off. So, do you guys have any questions for us?
No, nothing else going on.
It's great to hear.
Yeah, it was really super awesome. Oh, one other thing is that I did during my introduction time, I mentioned that we all were really invested in that process and we trusted the process and that we are not interested in receiving a recommendation just to turn around and change it and make, you know, modifications that, I know that's happened in the past, so I wanted to just make sure that folks knew that this isn't a rubber stamp that's happening. It's authentic and real and we really want a good product coming out of the group and I think we're going to get that, so it's really exciting.
Yeah, that's great.
All right. Well, moving on to number 13, public comment. This is specific to discussion and action items. If you would like to speak during public comment and are attending virtually, use the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you're attending in person, please approach the public comment table located in front of the board. Anybody else would like to speak tonight? Anybody online?
I see no hands raised.
All right.
Oh, yes, come on. And I'm going to ask you a few questions. So, tell us your name.
Sure. My name's Peggy Hart. I live in Silverton. And I really was going to make it through a meeting without saying anything.
Are you going to speak for yourself or for a group?
I'm speaking for myself.
Okay, we're going to give you three minutes then and what is your topic?
I just was really impressed with the superintendent's report and I just want to say that. Because I know someone who volunteers at the academy and if I could, is there a way to hear it? Is there a recording of it that's available?
Yes, and that will be up in the next 48 hours.
Okay, so I'd like to be able to let her hear what you said because it means a lot to her to be working here anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
And as far as hiring? No, I had thought, you know, I need a little bit of money. My social security is this big. And I'd sub before in an inner-city school in the Bay Area and I think I'll, the high school sounds like a really nice place to work. And also, they've got a new system for hiring subs. In California, I just had to pass a test and sign my name and I had to go through a ton of hoops with the new system that's being used to hire substitutes. It had 15 little lessons I had to learn about the laws and the challenges of how to use an amipen, all this kind of stuff that was really useful, that's going to be available to me and I really am grateful for that, for whoever decided to change the system and hire those people. So, thanks. Very nice.
Thank you so much for that great feedback.
We do have someone online.
Okay.
Hand raised. Annette Howe. So, Daniel, if you can promote Annette?
Are you able to unmute yourself? Hello, Annette? Can you hear us? Oh, there you are.
Okay, there, am I on?
You are. Can you introduce yourself and tell us the relationship you have with the district?
My name is Annette Howe and I am alumni of Silverton Union High School, class of 1977.
Are you speaking for yourself or for a group?
Myself.
All right. We're going to give you, we're going to give you three minutes, but it sounds like maybe you're going to be quicker than that. Go ahead.
Yes, I am. I just wanted to say I appreciate the Zoom and being able to watch and listen tonight to the meeting without having to disrupt my home life. So, thank you for letting us be on Zoom.
You are welcome. We plan to keep doing it. We think it's great for more people to participate, so thank you so much for your positive feedback. Anybody else?
No other hands raised.
Thank you. Let's move to number 14, future agenda item request. I have one thing. And Debbie, do we have an issue or do we not have an issue now? Never mind, I don't have that one thing anymore. Okay, and then the next thing I wanted to say is, oh, I think it'd be great for us to refresh ourselves on that board policy that talks about roles and responsibilities just because it would be good for us to refresh, kind of like when we do go over our board superintendent working agreement every meeting, it makes it more meaningful. I'm not asking for every meeting, I just maybe annually that we review those. So, that's my agenda request. Anybody else have any others? Well, with that, without further objection, we are going to move into executive session under O R S 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor All right, it's 9:48 and with that, we are returning into regular session and without objection, meeting adjourned.